So. I mean, no, no. And so that's.
Um, what's your real time?
Comments.
Twenty minutes.
This.
We keep.
That's.
It's.
Yeah.
I understand.
We're going to.
Yeah. In the meantime, we're not.
Yeah. Now, I'm somewhere you don't have sex. And you were here last month in seven six.
Yeah.
Yeah. In love.
Much.
No, that's it. Yes.
I just.
The town. The city. You look like he said that time.
Yeah. Thank you. Good.
It's. Yeah.
Um, all right. It's, uh. It has to be about you.
Okay. I appreciate.
Don't. Anyway. So. Right. So. I support.
So he said.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a city council meeting. Your case is.
Yes.
As you know, because you're.
Yeah.
Thanks for here some of that. But on you.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, good evening, everyone. It is six oh one and I'm going to call to order the November meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Um, looks like. All right, we've got four members here. We are missing Ryan Schwartz, Joe Tuttle and Tara Tegraw. So we, but we've got our quorum, so we're all good. Uh, the minutes from the October ninth meeting, did everyone have a chance to read them? And are there any comments? Or can I have a motion to approve them? Second, great, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor? All right, we have approved our October ninth meeting minutes. Thank you. Do we have any organizational and procedural items? Is this when I?
And I can, I can quickly speak this into the record. We've talked to the applicant and the applicant is represented by legal counsel. He has an attorney. The attorney is running late. The attorney will be here at six twenty. Uh.
Okay.
What, what, what I would recommend is, uh, for, for that case to hold the meeting to allow, or go into a recess.
Recession.
To allow the applicant to have his attorney present for the meeting. Um, it has been deferred already. So.
Okay, thank you. So in lieu of that, I, can I make that motion? I move to put the meeting into a recess for 20 minutes so that our applicant's attorney can be here and represent him through this meeting. But, okay, we've got a second. All those in favor? Okay, that is already, you were in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so we will move into a 20 minute recess and hopefully we will resume our meeting at six twenty three. Yeah.
Hey.
Yeah, this is the first since the city opened.
You're, you're, you're.
Hmm?
You know, obviously, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order and end our recess. We've got all parties here and so I think we are ready to move forward. I don't believe there are any other organizational or procedural items. And is there any unfinished business? No, okay, well then, moving forward prior to starting our new business, I will read the chairman's preamble. The zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code of ordinances to the facts of each case. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning, nor can it change zoning. Matters brought before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance, sign ordinance, and development and environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density, or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on the same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County within 30 days after the decision is rendered. And with that, I will turn it over to staff to present our case for the evening.
All right, thank you. So the case for tonight is ZBA twenty five dash fourteen fifty eighty seven Tilly Mill Road. They're requesting two variances, uh, both setback variances, one to allow a home addition and garage to encroach into the rear setback and one to allow a garage to encroach into the side setback. So this has been before you all two months ago with the September fourth CBA meeting. Um, and so at that time, the applicant had requested that the decision on the case be deferred to November in order to obtain a new as-built survey. Staff agreed with that recommendation and so the board deferred the case. Um, and the applicant has submitted and updated as-built survey. Um, and staff believes that the new survey accurately reflects the existing conditions on the property and can therefore serve as the applicant's site plan. So here's some photos of the existing conditions. So all the way on the right, um, you can see the facade of the house. Um, and then those two, uh, horizontal photos, uh, nearby show the rear of the house. And then on the left is shown the garage. And so I'll review the timeline briefly. You all have seen it before, so let me know if you have any additional questions. So, um, in, uh, twenty twenty two, working without permits, the applicant expanded the existing home by adding a second story rear addition to the house and extensions to the garage and also constructed a parking pad and retaining walls in the seventy five foot stream buffer. Um, there was a code complaint. The applicant paid citation, uh, was cited and paid fines. Um, the applicant obtained a special administrative permit in August twenty twenty four in order to demolish the, uh, improvements that I just listed within the seventy five foot stream buffer. Um, began the demo work without a demo permit. Um, more citations, more fines, and then the demolition permit has been approved, but the applicant has not yet completed the demolition work. So no stream buffer variance is requested as part of this case because the parking pad and retaining walls in the seventy five foot stream buffer will be demolished per the special administrative permit. So that just leaves us with the variance requests for the setbacks. And so the second story of the home addition and the garage encroach a maximum of 25 feet into the rear setback and the garage encroaches a maximum of 10 feet into the side setback. So to the left are the elevations of the house prior to the work being completed. And to the right, you can see the as-built survey. So the reason why there are two properties shown here is because the applicant owns both properties. Um, and so the, in blue, you can see the extension of the house, the second story of the house, and then in red, you can see the garage. And so again, the applicant owns both properties. That's why the one to the south is shown here. Um, the applicant has future plans to combine both of those lots into one lot, but that hasn't happened yet. So the stream runs from north to south through the middle of the property and its associated buffers cover approximately two thirds of the property, severely limiting the buildable area. The property also has really unique topography. It slopes down 28 feet from the eastern property line to the creek and then back up 28 feet to the western property line. Um, and so the house is set back approximately 150 feet from the street property line, which is well beyond the required 35 foot street setback. So it's really pushed back substantially towards the rear of the property. Um, and so the encroachment of the home addition and garage into the rear setback is relatively minor, appearing to be the minimum necessary to afford relief. Prior to the new second story, home addition and garage construction, the existing home was previously located right at the rear setback, providing no opportunity for improvements without encroachment. Uh, the garage also encroaches fully into the southern setback, side setback, excuse me. Like I said, the applicant owns the property adjacent to the south and has plans to combine both of his lots. The property to the south is too small to be feasibly developed as a standalone lot with a home and is undeveloped beyond a portion of his existing driveway. Uh, so once both lots are combined and that would be a separate process from the variance process, the need for a side setback variance would go away. So staff doesn't find that the side setback variance poses much of an inconvenience to any adjacent neighbors since he owns that adjacent lot. Um, so staff finds that the strict application of the setback requirements could cause practical difficulty by not allowing for incremental changes to the property. Overall, staff finds that the project would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare and that the requested setback variances would be consistent with the spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. So based on these reasons, staff is recommending approval of the variances subject to two conditions, and I'll go into them because they're a little bit different than our standard conditions. So the first one is conditioning them to the submitted site plan. Um, with the exception that the parking pad and retaining walls in the seventy five foot stream buffer must be removed within 90 days of the granting of this variance. And so a demolition permit must be obtained in order to do the demolition work. So again, permission to encroach into the stream buffer to do the removal has been granted already, but the demolition work hasn't occurred yet and we're really wanting to get that underway so that the, so that the code enforcement case can be fully wrapped up. Um, and so we're, we're asking that that be a part of it tonight as well as to make it clear that the site plan that is approved does not include any encroachment into the seventy five foot stream buffer. And the second one is that the applicant must apply for a construction permit within 60 days of the granting of this variance in order to complete the remaining construction work in the house and garage. And so on the front of the garage, let me go back to show it real quick. There, you can see there's a little sort of ledge coming out and there's a door right above it. This is in the photo all the way to the left. So that's a balcony that needs to be finished and hasn't been yet because there's been a stop work order on the property. Um, so we're, uh, so we're, um, limiting them to getting the construction permit within 60 days of the granting of the variance and completing all work within one year of the granting of the variance. Again, this is just to ensure this case has gone on for a while, as you all saw with the dates. And so just ensuring that we can sort of wrap up all of the, all of the loose ends and, and move on. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, I have a quick question to clarify the status of the demolition permit. I think you mentioned that it has been issued. We know that the demolition work hasn't been done.
The special administrative permit in order to, so to encroach into the stream buffer to do anything, you need permission. And so the special administrative permit, um, said that he could encroach into the stream buffer, but still needed to get a demolition permit. The demolition permit was approved, but not paid for and not issued.
Oh, okay, so the demo permit is approved, but not issued.
Right.
And had it been, could the applicant do that work even though there's a stop work order on the property? Can you demo without doing net new work? Does that make sense? Or is work just a blanket thing saying, no, you can't even do demo?
We would have allowed him to move forward with the demolition.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, would the applicant or representative like to come forward and present the case? And if you could please state your name and your address.
I'm Alan Schumberg, I'm the attorney for Mr. Joel Ateen. Uh, I'll watch you.
I winchy.
Some point I'll pronounce that correctly. And I apologize, I mixed up the dates and I also had, uh, a surgery two, less than two weeks ago and.
Can you please speak straight into?
Oh, sorry. I apologize for being late because I had surgery less than two weeks ago and it has thrown me off. I have to go back tomorrow to get cleared. So it's, I'm trying to get everything. So we're asking for two variances here. And basically, as, uh, we're, we're asking for the two variances here and we're, you know, my client is willing to do the conditions that, you know, with, with the variances. And then from there, he's going to apply, you know, within 90 days and then 60 days for the construction permit. And, you know, we believe there's a general hardship tied to the property itself by the way that topography. we believe there's a general hardship tied to the property itself by the way that topography and everything is of that property. If you drive into that property, you have to, I mean, you can't even, you have to stop your car because there's a twenty-eight-foot drop, and then it comes back up. So what, you know, to be honest, whatever he does with the property is, is, is an improvement. That's the way we feel. Also, so there is a general hardship dealing with, you know, and the house was built before the code. So he's trying to just expand, you know, just to raise the height. So, and with the variance, you know, harming the neighborhood, this neighborhood or public interest? No, I believe it's going to help. I mean, you know, he owns the property next door. That's why he's combining it. So it'd be less variances and stuff, so we can get this through. Also, is the request minimal and reasonable? Yeah, we believe we're, that's why he's combining the properties. So we're only asking for two variants instead of four. There were, so he's just trying to comply. And that's, and basically that we're trying to move forward, so that the variances be granted. Thank you.
Sorry, anything else? No. Okay. Thank you. If we have additional questions, we'll call you back up. Are there any public comments for or against? No, I don't see any. Okay, well, public comment time is closed, and we will move into board discussion and comments. Board, questions? Comments?
Yeah, I have one for the applicant or the representative of the applicant. So for me personally, I don't see issue with the hardship. I mean, I think that's pretty clear cut. The question I have is there's a very clear pattern of order of operations here where protocol isn't necessarily being followed. So my concern is the granting this variance. And then I know it's outlined in, in the staff recommendation about within a ninety days, but, you know, there's already a clear evidence that the applicant can already do demolition on something that they shouldn't have done to begin with. Whether that was known or not is relevant as far as I'm concerned. I think it speaks to the intent of the applicant or the representative of this particular property. And again, this is a very clear pattern over time. So my question is to either of you, the applicant or the representative, if we were to grant this variance today, what, what is the confidence level that we should expect to have that you're going to follow through with what is being prepared? And two, a question of staff would be is if we can, is there ever been a case, not necessarily from a precedent standpoint, or is there a recommendation that if that is not adhered to, that this particular board does not see this case again, and it goes to a different level of legal precedence, if you will, or, or legal entity? Can, so it's two separate questions, two different audiences, but whoever can address either of those would be greatly helpful, in my opinion, for this board.
I can, I can start. We've issued citations on this case twice. If we are sort of at a point that's been taking a long time, if these requirements aren't met, we'll be ready a day after that to issue a new set of citations and have it go back to municipal court. That is, that, that is, that is what is going to happen with this.
Thank you. Yeah, sure, please.
Of the delay, how to deal with, as they know, the site plan and the, and the drawings? Because he had to switch companies twice in order to get these correct, to adhere to it. I mean, the engineers that he used just were not doing the job correctly. And that was one of the, that was the main reason why it has been delayed for so long.
The demolition was contingent upon that?
Demolition, there was a, I don't know if it was a miscommunication or something. Originally, we were told that you can go ahead, you have the demolition permit, you could start work on it. And that's what we thought by the original letter that we got. And then after he started the demolition, they said, no, you have to wait for this. And that, it was just a mix-up, but we're, we're clearing all that up, and that's what we've been doing.
Alakra, how long ago was the demo, demo permit approved?
My understanding is that it was approved back in the spring.
Okay.
But not issued.
Right, because of lack of payment.
Correct.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
We didn't know that there was additional payment because he paid money already for the application, the SAP and all that stuff.
So I guess to, in the spirit of that, though, you, you know you need to pay for it either way, and that you want to go through with this work. Why hasn't that been paid at this point? Why hasn't the demolition permit been paid? But it's not contingent on the variance. It's independent of that. I, I, I guess what I'm getting at here is this board, I personally am, am a little bit confused here. You guys are claiming that you're confused about what's going on, but it, the math isn't adding up here. I mean, there's, there's, there's an intent to do work. There's, there's some things that have been done. There's kind of like asking for forgiveness versus permission, and that's fine. But there's, it's very clearly spelled out that whether you get this or not, you're going to need to remove what's already there that you shouldn't have put there to begin with, right? And that, yeah, you need to be in the stream buffer to do that, but that you have permission to do so. Pay this, and you can do that work. But that's, it, it's just not showing good faith at all. And I'm curious to, what is the logical reasoning behind that? Speaking, you know, speaking as a board who represents the city and its citizens.
May I speak freely? Okay, so.
Can you identify yourself in?
I want to Joel Ateen. I'm the owner at five zero eight seven Tillamy Road, Danwood, Georgia, three zero three three eight. And I totally understand your concern. I would be concerned too. So first, I was ordered to do the demolition, okay? And I started the next day after municipal court, after I paid the citation. I was had to do the demolition. The next day, the demolition started, okay? Because I wanted to do what court asked me to do. And all of a sudden, I got another citation for not obtaining a demolition permit, right? I was like, oh, I was in court, I was asked to do the demolition. I was not asked to do any demolition permit or anything like that. That's why I started the demolition. I got another citation for not obtaining a permit to do the demolition. So I was ordered to stop until I get a demolition permit, right? And on top of that, we receive another stop to do the variance in contingence with the demolition. So I had to stop the demolition and apply for the variance. Okay, so we did the variance application, and that's when we came to court last month. But we got resets to this month because their survey was not what the city approved, right? So I had to get another company to do the, the survey, okay? So be mindful, I was ready to do the demolition. I was told you cannot do the demolition until you get a permit, right? And we were here, I didn't know how to get another permit since I had a citation and I was ordered to do the demolition, and I was told to stop until the variance is complete. That's what happened, right? So prior to, after, today, I was told that, hey, here's a condition of what need to be done if the variance was granted, right? So I contacted the city, I said, oh, I thought the demolition was already approved, right? But we got a reply back saying, no, it was approved, but you did not pay, right? Usually, when it's approved, you get a link to make a payment. As of today, I don't even know how much it is for me to pay for the demolition. I don't know. Because from the record, anytime my citation was almost a thousand, I paid it. When I came back for violating the demolition, I paid the same day, right? So into today, I don't even know how much the demolition is to, to pay, to be granted a permit. But as far as paying it, I don't, I don't mind paying it, and I don't mind doing the demolition the next day. But I didn't know, to be honest. I didn't know how much, and I didn't even know what I need to pay to get a permit if it was approved.
So at the conclusion of this meeting, I'm sure the staff will work with you to make sure you know how to pay for the demolition permit that has been approved. And also, you have the special administrative, so you have the special administrative permit. You just need to pay for the demolition permit.
Correct.
So the special administrative permit allows you to be doing the work in the stream buffer. The demolition permit allows you to pull out what had been done prior. Just work with staff after the meeting, and they'll make sure you know the steps to take to pay for that permit and get that demolition work done within ninety days of the, if the variance is granted.
And the, the reason why I ask that in general is, you know, I'm even, and this is open for board discussion, obviously, but I'm even considering wanting to amend the staff recommendation if we were to approve this to say your demolition permit needs to be paid by the end of the week, basically. I mean, that's, yeah, like tomorrow, because there's probably a clear answer in how to do that. To your point, I understand where you're coming from, where you had a lot thrown at you, and times pass and things like that, and there's a lot of administrative things. But assuming that staff wouldn't have a problem with that or anything like that, I think that's kind of like super low-hanging fruit, not going to be very efficient and not waste anyone's time on either party. So I think I just wanted to put that out there, and I know you wanted to say something.
Thank you.
Two quick questions. Go ahead. No, you go.
Actually, this is a question for staff. So can you talk me through the process to combine lots?
I will actually defer that to Paul. He's a bit more knowledgeable on that one.
Yeah, it goes through, so it's technically the subdivision process. It's called a combination plan. It's the subdivision process with public notification requirements. Combination is typically, in this case, I do not think it will be hard. But there's a thirty-day public notice requirement. It has to go through our review, and then it has to be reviewed by DeKalb County and recorded eventually with the Superior Court.
And to clarify, if the lots were to be combined, then we wouldn't be seeking these variances for the garage?
So there's still the rear setback variance.
Okay.
The side setback variance on that side would fall away.
Okay, and then my second question to that is ignoring the side setback. If for some reason this was not approved tonight, and if it were to, the lots were to be combined, then without a variance, despite the lack of approval tonight, he could build the garage in the future if the lots were combined? Because now you wouldn't be dealing with a variance.
So he still needs for the garage, he still needs a variance into the rear setback?
Oh, the garage, yeah.
That, that, that aspect would remain.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, you can stay. It's normally a question for the, for the applicant, but since you're recommending approval, just for the record, as far as the variance is concerned, the reason why it would, we would be recommending variance and it would for our side is because of the slope of the property and because the house is pushed back further than most other houses are.
Yeah, the existing location of the house, if you wanted to build it, now you would probably have to put it in roughly the location it is currently due to the stream buffer. The stream buffer goes into, al- almost to the house, pretty much. And we would want the house to be pushed back as far as possible to have that distance to the stream buffer. Now with the existing location of that house, the applicant is limited to, to where he can add, of course. And the only place he has to go for incremental improvements is, is into the back inside.
Yeah. Do you have any idea approximately how much the demolition charges would be? The unpaid charges? I'm not going to make sure.
No, it's, it's, it's a few hundred dollars, but let's call it two or three hundred dollars.
Yeah, yeah. If you, the ones that. Okay, I'm, I'm ready. I mean, you guys.
I have a follow-up question. Paul? So you've written in here, you know, with the conditions that sixty days, the construction permit applied for within sixty days, ninety days, the demolition needs to be complete. Is it possible to not to have the actual construction permit be contingent upon the completion of the demolition? And not, because right now for me, they overlap, and, and I want to be very honest, I, you know, so I'm very aware of city protocol. I'm very aware, as someone who has done construction on the house, as someone who has had a stop work ordered because of a neighbor who claimed something that wasn't true. As someone who's very aware of what policy in the city looks like, and this isn't directed at you, Paul, this is directed at the applicants. There is incredible clarity in this process, and the city does not miscommunicate, and the city is very clear in processes. So, so some of the excuses fall flat with me to begin with. Second part is knowing that the demolition permit was, it was approved back in the spring. There is really, in my mind, especially considering the small dollar amount compared to the thousands of dollars for the other codes, the fact that we are now in November, and that permit, you know, that demolition permit has not been paid for? Again, we're running into like, you know, just excuses that don't make sense in my mind from, from a logical standpoint. And we're talking about years, you know, years, like at least three years' worth of running into bad faith behavior. So I am inclined to find the way that makes it this closed business in, in a way that protects the city, protects city lawyers, because that costs taxpayers money every time we have to follow up on someone who is not engaging in appropriate behaviors. That is costing the city, which means it's costing every citizen. So my inclination is to tighten this to the, to the group in a way that makes things like, we're not getting ahead of ourselves. The demolition needs to be cleared and done prior to any release of a construction permit. And so I would like to open up for board discussion on that. I'm not, I don't know if that will cause additional delays. I, I, I think there are areas where, I think Ryan had an idea of one way to condense this timeframe by putting in a very soon deadline to pay for the demolition permit. I'm afraid if you require that. So the demolition work has to be completed within ninety days based on the recommendation that staff put out. The applicant must apply for the construction permit within sixty days based on the staff recommendation. So they see that it would be okay to give a little more time to get the demolition done. I, I don't know how long it will take to get the demolition done. We're all, we're entering the winter holidays. Could be some weather issues, so I just don't know if trying to put some teeth in that will end up biting us in the end. And, and I'm probably, I mean, I understand your intent, but I'm more inclined to just go with staff's recommendation, just considering realistically what's coming up in the next ninety days.
You said they'd be ready to do demolition the day that they get that.
I mean, let's hope, right, that they could start it. Who knows that they would finish it?
Ask them and put them a record.
I mean, if, if you want to ask, but I, I just hesitate to, to put something in here that will then cause additional problems, just looking at the calendar and knowing that some unforeseen things could happen, even though the applicant has done everything he's expected to do.
I don't think it's necessarily under our purview to get into that layer. It sounds like legally or otherwise, but to your point, to be able to find teeth in something that shows an interest of all parties, taxpayers included, teeth in something that shows an interest of all parties, taxpayers included, I'm proposing to amend the recommendation to, um, for example, pay the demolition permit within two business days or something that shows a very low-hanging fruit, good faith effort. If that does not occur, I don't know what to say outside of that. Um, I'm not in the construction business. To your point, I've been through, to Erica's point, I've been through that kind of thing personally with my property, um. So, but ninety days versus things like that is probably more under the purview of, of the city itself, and I, I agree that I rec- uh, that I trust that that's a, those are good numbers, um, but I'm not sure what else we should tinker with in terms of me- you know, meddling in some of those details. I don't know if, I, I agree, I, I don't, it's not that I disagree with what you're saying at all. I think we're on the same page there. Um, but Paul, you seem like you wanted to say something.
I have one thing to add, that, um, in this case, we are prepared to, uh, bring this back to the, to the prosecutor. If, if something is not moving with expediency, that's why we uh, recommended these timelines. These are timelines that we use like ninety days for something like this is a typical timeline that we give people from a code enforcement standpoint, because it's a, it's a reasonable timeline where something can be completed. If we get too strict, or if we get punitive, then we run the risk that that might be thrown out. I, I think these we consulted with our code enforcement officials on, on this. These are timelines that are, that are not uncommon, they're not, they're not overly strict, but they're strict. Um, that, that's why we proposed those. We can, we can certainly open it up on, on some of this, but I, I wouldn't go to like a two-business-day type, type, type of thing, because we're, but, but anything that is violated in this is going to be a citation and will go, yeah.
The two days was payment. It wasn't to like begin demolition, it was two, two days to submit payment for the demolition permit. So.
Yep, is that appropriate?
And that, I'd rather have something, um, that, that isn't two-business-days, but like fourteen, like, let's say two, two weeks, I think is for, for payment is a, is a, is a reasonable timeline, yeah.
Okay. Art, did you want to contribute anything else?
No, I'd like to.
Okay.
And I'd like to put it.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion, um. I move to approve the request for one variance from chapter twenty-seven, section fifty-eight, to allow a home addition and garage to encroach into the rear setback, and one variance from chapter twenty-seven, section fifty-eight, to allow a garage to encroach into the side setback, subject to the following conditions. Number one, construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan, prepared by United Land Surveying and dated nine seventeen twenty twenty-five, with the exception that the parking pad and retaining walls in the seventy-five-foot stream buffer must be removed within ninety days of the granting of this variance. A demolition permit must be obtained and paid within fourteen business days, as determined by staff and applicant, in order to do the demolition work, see appendix A. Two, the applicant must apply for a construction permit within sixty days of the granting of this variance in order to complete the remaining construction work in this, in the house and garage. All work shall be completed within one year of the granting of this variance.
We have a, we have a motion, do we have a second? I'll second. Okay, all those in favor? All right, it passes and the variance request is approved. Thank you, staff, thank you applicant and representative. And do we have any other business for this evening? No other business? Is there any public comment? Doesn't look like it. Any other board comment? Thank you, staff, for all of your work in making sure we had all the information we needed to fully understand this case. We appreciate that, as always. Um, and with that, we are adjourned.